Okay, let's call to order the Sparks City Council Meeting of Monday, November 27th, 2017 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Deere.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, next we have the invocation speaker, which is Pastor Barbara West, Sparks Church of the Nazarene. Welcome Barbara.
Thank you so much. Would you bow your heads in prayer with me, please? Our Heavenly Father, what a great time to say thank you. We so appreciate having this American holiday called Thanksgiving that we've all just enjoyed. And Lord, as we approach the Advent season, we would ask you to be in all of the activities. For today, we thank you for the city council and all of our city officials and pray that as they meet today, their decisions would be effective and good. And we think about the upcoming weekend with the lighting of the tree and the big parade on Saturday and ask you to just bring us all together for that joyous time. And Lord, we just want to say thank you for keeping us safe over this past holiday and pray that we would be safe and secure during the entire time between now and New Year's time. So would you bless this council, Lord, with the decisions to be made and help us all in all of the things that we are doing? In Jesus' name, amen.
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 Could all remain standing for the Pledge of Legions. Mr. Lawson, would you lead us, please?
Yes, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Next is public comment. Anyone who wants to speak under public comment? I have one card. If you want to speak under public comment, please fill one of these out and give it to the clerk. And I have Aria Orley.
Thank you so much for having me speak today. My name's Aria Overly and I am an organizer for Action. We organize faith communities in the area around issues of social justice. And I just wanted to come inform the council today about a network of emergency shelters we're setting up this winter. As many of you are likely aware, the Shelter and the Overflow Shelter in Reno have both been full for about a month now, so there's nowhere for people to go this winter. I hear we're expecting the first snowfall this upcoming weekend, so it could be a really dangerous winter for folks who are out on the streets. So we are bringing together a coalition of faith communities and churches in the area to volunteer staff an emergency shelter that we're setting up this winter. We just wanted to come here and let everyone know that that's happening and we're still looking for volunteers who are interested in being there from 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM to staff the shelter, to help get people off the streets and make sure that they're safe this winter. Thank you.
Aria, do you have any contact information where the-
Yes, I do.
-council or anyone out there, the people that are watching can contact you and make arrangements to come and volunteer for you?
Absolutely. I forgot to bring these up, but I do have some sheets with some more information as well as contact information, which I'm happy to put right here, if anyone's
So is there a number on there you can give us?
Yes, absolutely. There's enough contact information on there.
Okay, tell us what it is.
So Dan and Teresa Jacobson from the LDS Church is heading up the admin work for this, so you can reach out to them if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else under public comment? Okay, approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order?
It's a poll. You see if you can-
Yes, go ahead.
If we could poll 9.7, we have some detail that needs to be changed for that particular one, and we will bring it back with the next one.
Okay. So with that change, can we make, have to get a motion? Mr. Smith?
Move to approve the agenda as presented, deleting 9.7.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda as outlined by staff with the one correction of pulling 9.7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Minutes 6.1, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council Meeting of November 13th, 2017. Any additions, deletions, corrections? Okay, seeing none, we're looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council Meeting of November 13th, 2017.
Miss Bybee, or Mr. Dare, I'm sorry.
All right.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Abbott, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve the minutes of November 13th, 2017. Any omissions, directions, collections, deletions? Okay, seeing none, let's vote and it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, announcements. We have non-consent items. Anybody want to pull 8.1 or 8.2? Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Mr. Dare?
I move to approve consent items 8.1 and 8.2.
Mr. Dawson?
Dawson?
Lawson.
Word one?
Yeah.
Second.
Dawson. See, you're from Tony's old war. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Abbott, right? And a second by Mr. Lawson. Okay.
Close enough.
Close enough.
From Dawson.
To approve consent items 8.1, 8.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Let's move into general business 9.1, consideration and possible approval of a reimbursement to the city of Reno for Sparks' share of a contract AC 5422 with KG Walters Construction Company, Inc. for the RAS plumbing improvements. Okay, Mr. Drinkwater, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Michael Drinkwater, excuse me, treatment plant manager. You have before you today a request to approve a reimbursement agreement to the city of Reno for a capital improvement project at Tom Wharf. This one is for the rebuilding of the return activated sledge or the RAS pump, System One Pump System. This is something we depend upon. It's critical infrastructure. It is at the end of its service life. It's a little bit undersized now, so we're, the design engineer designed a nice new one for us that's going to take that into consideration. This is, was anticipated. It is in the approved Tom Wharf Capital Improvement Program, so we're asking for your approval of the reimbursement to the city of Reno for this contract.
Questions for Mr. Drinkwater? Okay, no questions, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
I move to approve the reimbursement to the city of Reno for the Sparks' share of the RAS pumping, excuse me, pumping improvements, System One Project at Tom Wharf in an amount not to exceed $792,406.20.
Mr. Abbott?
I'll second it.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Abbott to approve 9.1 is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. You got another one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 9.2, consideration and possible approval for reimbursement to the city of Reno for Sparks' share of a consulting agreement AC 5423 for construction and maintenance management services with HDR Engineering, Inc. for the Tom Wharf RAS pumping improvements. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Michael Drinkwater, treatment plant manager. You have before you a request to approve reimbursement to the city of Reno for a consultant agreement. This is the construction management for the project that you just approved moments ago, the System One RAS Pump System. HDR was the design engineer. We typically keep them on as the construction manager because they have the most familiarity with the project. So we're asking for your approval of the reimbursement to Reno to get this project underway.
Questions, Mr. Dare?
I just have a motion. We're ready. I just have a motion and ready.
Go for it.
I move to approve reimbursement to the city of Reno for Sparks' share of a consulting agreement for construction and management services with HDR Engineering Incorporated for the Tom Wharf RAS Pumping Improvement System One Project in an amount not to exceed
Mr. Smith? Okay, moved by Mr. Dare, seconded by Mr. Smith, but we have a question. Go ahead, Charlie.
Real quick, what is the timeline on this? When are you anticipating starting the project and completion?
So we're looking, with your approval, it would go, we would have the notice to proceed would be issued fairly quickly with a kickoff meeting in the middle of December. However, there are some long lead type items, so as soon as we gave the contractor the notice to proceed, they would start the procurement phase, which we anticipate to be three months. Some of the pumps are, again, long lead time manufacturing items, so within, we'd actually start the demo and construction in the early spring and it's approximately a six-month construction window.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 9.3 is consideration, discussion, and possible approval to participate in an agreement AC 5424 with Tahoe Pacific Hospital to provide the rehabilitation services to employees, dependents, retirees covered by the city's group health plan and authorize, authorization for the city manager to execute the participation agreement for these services. Go ahead, Jen.
Good afternoon, city council, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Jen McCall, human resources analyst. I'm here today to make a recommendation that the city council approve a participation agreement with Tahoe Pacific Hospital to provide rehabilitation services to employees, dependents, and retirees covered by the city's group health plan and authorization for the city manager to execute the participation agreement for these services. This would be a renewal of a current agreement that we have with Tahoe Pacific Hospital. They're located inside Northern Nevada Medical Center and they provide rehabilitation services as referred through the Hometown Network. They are increasing their established hospital rates by 1.8%, which is very, very competitive for our area. We actually have not had anyone in the last year utilize Tahoe Pacific Rehabilitation Services. However, it is always nice to have an option for our members to utilize. Do you have any questions I can answer?
Mr. Smith?
Jen, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jen, you've got quite a few of these. Are these just to cover everybody, no matter where they're at?
Yes, sir.
If they need a hospital or anything like that.
Yes, sir. So we're now as our primary hospital, as you are aware. We do have agreements that Nevada Health Partners goes out and seeks on our behalf to save us money and to give our members some additional options. And so when we have members that need services that might not be available in the area or that might not be the right fit, or they just want a choice, Hometown Health will work with us to set those people, those members up with different facilities.
I'll make a motion.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Smith?
Okay, I move to approve to participate in agreement with Tahoe Pacific Hospital to provide rehab services to employees, dependents, and retirees covered by the city's group health plan.
Do we have a second? Mr. Abbott?
I'll second it.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Abbott to approve agenda item 9.3. Any questions? Seeing none, please vote. Well, you already said that, fine, okay. Passes unanimously. You don't need me here.
We are really quick.
9.4, consideration, discussion, and possible approval to participate in a letter of agreement AC 5425 negotiated by Nevada Health Partners with the University of Utah to provide hospital services to employees, dependents, and retirees covered by the city's group health plan. Go ahead, Jen.
For the record, Jen McCall, human resources. I move to approve that the city council approved to participate in a letter of agreement negotiated by Nevada Health Partners with the University of Utah to provide hospital services to employees, dependents, and retirees. We're pretty excited about this. We have been trying to get an agreement with the University of Utah for quite some time. They are a great alternative for folks going over the hill to UC Davis, UCSF, and some of the hospitals in California that charge quite a bit of money. We have services that can be provided at the University of Utah for far less. However, these, the Centers for Excellence are considered in the top 10 in the country and they have some centers of excellence there that we can't offer here in Northern Nevada. For example, one of the big ones is Mental Illness Assistance for children. We don't have a lot of facilities here that offer that kind of help and University of Utah has a Center for Excellence that would provide our children on our plan services there. The way this would work would be they would contact Hometown Health, Hometown Health's clinical department, and a physician would review the services. If they could not be provided here or they would have the opportunity for better service somewhere else, Hometown Health would be able to work with the University of Utah to have them go ahead and go there for their services. University of Utah at that point would still be considered an in-network hospital and provide very competitive rates to our members for services at their location. Can I answer any questions for you?
Mr. Dare?
Yeah, I think this is pretty wonderful, actually. Good job on that. I know there's a lot of people these days that are traveling to hospitals and other places. Is there a list of this? Like, so employees, if they said, you know, we want, we'd like to see what we have, or is it just contacting Hometown Health?
It's a little bit of both. So typically when a member needs medical assistance, especially of this magnitude, they would contact the Hometown Health for pre-certification for an inpatient stay. At that point, we do have a doctor on staff at Hometown Health. Her name's Dr. Linda Ash Jackson. Her clinical team would review it and ensure that our members are going to the best facility for their treatment. So for example, we had a member last year who needed some very tricky orthopedic surgery and the physician here had only performed it one time. And with that member's risk factors, it wasn't a good idea that they be treated here. So at the time, they worked out a letter of agreement for services to be done at Stanford. So this, the same thing, they would contact Hometown Health for their pre-certification. They would be referred to the clinical team, who would then determine the best location for that patient for those services.
That's a wonderful thing for our staff.
I think so, too. Are there any other questions I can answer?
A motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve to participate in a letter of agreement with the University of Utah for hospital services for employees, dependents, and retirees covered by the city's group health plan and authorization for the city manager to execute the letter of agreement for these services.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve 9.4. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor?
Dare.
If I might, on the previous item, the motion didn't include the city manager's authorization. I just wanted to make sure that that was the intent of the person that made the motion to allow the manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the council. So if that's, if that was the intent of the motion, then we're good. If not, I would need a new motion.
I think I made the motion and that was the intent.
Great, thank you.
I believe that myself.
Thank you for the clarification.
The one before, Ron?
Yeah, 9.4.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because I just-
Thank you.
Okay, 9.5, consideration, discussion, possible approval to participate in an agreement AC 5426 negotiated by Nevada Health Partners with the University of Utah to provide hospital services to employees, dependents, and retirees.
With a 9.6.
9.5.
9.5, yeah. Let me clear my throat. Okay, how about 9.5? Would that work?
Excellent.
Don't just stand there, slap me or something up here, will you? 9.5, consideration, discussion, and possible approval to participate in an agreement AC 5426 negotiated by Nevada Health Partners and HP with Carson's Tahoe Health Services to provide hospital services and employees, dependents, and retirees covered by the city's group health plan.
Thank you. For the record, Jen McCall, human resources. I'm here today to ask that you extend our current agreement with Carson Tahoe Medical Facility. They are currently one of our in-network hospitals. Our current agreement expires on December 31st and they have offered us a two-year extension at no increase over current hospital rates. Can I answer any questions? We have quite a few members that utilize this facility now as well, so it's logistically, geographically placed well for our folks that live out in Carson, Gardner Ville, Minden, and Tahoe, and we're looking forward to doing business with them for another couple of years with your approval.
Nice change from 25% increases we were getting just 34 years ago.
Good stuff. Any other questions? Looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson?
All right, I move to approve to participate in agreement negotiated by NHP with CTHS for hospital services for employees, dependents, and retirees covered by the city's group health insurance for the period of January 1, 2018 through December 31st of 2019 and authorize for the city manager to execute and participate.
That's the alternative.
Still want that one?
I think also go to alternative.
Does that still get to the, yeah, and let the city manager do it? So it's the same He tricked us, but we'll stay with that one.
Okay.
It gets the job done, right?
Right.
Are you good with it, Steve? Alternative one and the recommended motion are the same verbiage.
I apologize.
Yeah. Sorry. I can read and speak at the same time.
I'm impressed.
And I can actually walk and chew gum at the same time.
Are we on time to paperwork?
That's it.
Mr. Smith? Motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve agenda item 9.6 is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Please vote. Passes unanimously. Let me see, 9.7, Steve, we're going to poll.
Now we're on 6.
9.6.
Did I miss another one?
We're on 6 now. 9.6.
Somebody's going to fire me, I think. Okay, let's go, 9.6, consideration, discussion, possible approval to participate in an agreement 5427 negotiated by Nevada Health Plant Partners with Northern Nevada Medical Center to provide hospital services to employees, dependents, and retirees covered by the city's group health plan for the period of January 1, 2018 through December 31st, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Jen McCall, human resources analyst. This is another extension to a current agreement. I recommend that we extend our agreement with Northern Nevada Medical Center. This is a one-year extension due to expire December 31st, 2018. Northern Nevada Medical Center has renegotiated a competitive rate at 2.38%. The national trend is 5% to 7%, so this is still competitive for the market and we still have quite a few members using Northern Nevada Medical Center as an in-network hospital. May I ask, are there any questions for you regarding Northern Nevada Medical Center?
Mr. Lawson?
Ready to make a motion.
Any questions? Shoot.
Move to approve to participate in an agreement negotiated with NHP and NMCC for hospital services for employees, dependents, and retirees covered by the city's group health plan for the period of January 1, 2018 through December 31st, 20, should that say, 2019?
It's 2018. It's a one-year extension.
One-year deal, okay. An authorization for the city manager to execute participation in the agreement for these services.
Have a second, Mr. Dare?
I second it.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Dare to approve agenda item 9.6. Any further Please vote. Passes unanimously, okay.
Thank you for your time.
9.7 will be polled, right, Steve?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, there's some additional information we're going to receive and this will be on the next agenda, council agenda, is that correct?
9.7, Mr. Mayor, we just had some detail that was not correct on what was submitted with the staff report, so we just need to clean that up, bring it back to you, make sure that all the detail is in fact correct.
Okay.
And so you'll see it at your next meeting.
Okay, 9.8 is the first reading.
Bill Number 2729, an ordinance by the city of Sparks amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to revise definitions, permitted uses, landscaping, density, parking, and other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2729. A public hearing and second reading of this bill will be held, conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, December 11th, 2017. Okay, public hearings, we have none. Planning, we have none. Comments from the public? Anyone in the public, like to make the comment, please fill out one of these cards and come up and talk to us in three minutes? Anyone? No jakers, good. Comments from the city council and city manager. Mr. Driscoll?
Yes, sir. I have several items, just starting with a couple of announcements. The first one is the term will expire for following committee in December of 2017. Sparks Planning Commission, one member for a four-year term. I will go through how to do applications, but this one closes, applications will close on December 15th, 2017. Also, the Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee, one member for a four-year term, and the requirement is the applicant must be in the residential construction industry. Applications for this position will close also on Friday, the 15th of December. Thirdly, the Airport Noise Advisory Panel, one member for two years. Applications for that will close on December 15th, 2017. And lastly, a position on the Civil Service Commission, one member for a partial term that will end on June 30th of 2019. Applications for this will close on Friday, January 12th. So persons who are interested in any of these four announcements and serving in the committee should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You can also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on Government on the web page, then under Boards and Commissions, click on Volunteering for Sparks Board or Commission, and then fill out the online application and submit. Additionally, just an announcement to follow up on last meeting, our next scheduled meeting in December would normally be on Monday, December 25th, because that's a holiday. It would normally fall under your rules on December 26th, and I found no objection and no business that was necessary to conduct that meeting, so I will not be scheduling a meeting for you on October 26th, which means our next regular business meeting will be on Monday, December 13th, unless there's objections.
Questions?
December what?
December 26th.
December 26th will be canceled, so January, the next, the first Monday in January will be the next scheduled meetings.
You said October.
Yeah, sorry.
But we have December 11th.
So we do December 11th, nothing on the 26th, and then we come back together again in January.
Totally confused.
Totally, totally.
Do we have a meeting on October 26th?
Not last October.
Okay, comments from the city council and city manager. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of comments. About a week and a half, two weeks ago, three of us went to Charlotte, North Carolina for the National League of Cities, and I would like to make a recommendation. For the next agenda that we rejoin the National League of Cities, we were a member, dropped out during the recession because of travel and other circumstances, but I think the dues around $7,500 a year, I think it'd be well worth it for us to consider that. Number two, number three, number four, this weekend, Friday night, we're having a tree lighting at Victorian Square at 6:00?
Yeah, that's at 6:30, we have a tree lighting.
At 7:00. Then we have the Hometown Christmas Parade on Saturday, and then 39 North will be going all weekend also, so come downtown and help us celebrate the Christmas season.
I just want to make an announcement or a reminder because I've had several calls even up through this morning from constituents and residents in Sparks who were concerned and wanted input on the multifamily rezoning request on Los Altos and Goodwin. That was polled two weeks ago. The developer withdrew his request for rezoning, and so because that was withdrawn, it does not come to council tonight. There is no special meeting. We're trying to get word out that the special meeting that we originally were scheduled to have tonight is not happening, but for all of you that are interested in- to have tonight is not happening, but for all of you that are interested in the, in that, what will be happening on that site, right now it's withdrawn, with the understanding the developer has said he's going to come back with a development agreement of what he plans to do on that property, and he has to go through the whole process, which includes working with our staff, with our planning staff, going through all those steps, and then it would go to Planning Commission before it came back here to council. We don't have time, time certain right now, excuse me, on when that will be, but we will, public will be noticed. I'm sure there'll be public input on that throughout the process, but tonight there is no special meeting. Anybody who might be watching on Facebook Live right now, or if you know people who are considering and talking about, trying to give us their input tonight, I hope nobody shows up at six, because we won't be here, but we will keep you apprised of what's going on, and that we'll be coming back, but we don't know the time yet, so I just wanted to make sure people knew that, and they can contact me directly to, after the first of the year, if they want me to contact you directly. I'd be glad to do that, so thank you.
Mr. Dare?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, for a moment, want to bring up what was spoken about in the very beginning with our young lady that was talking about the homeless shelter. I'm, I'm pretty involved in that, and what is happening with that is, each night you actually have three to four volunteers that are needed. They also have security and everything like that that they're providing, but they're asking churches or businesses or people who want to get, get out there and find a way to help, to volunteer just once a month. And so it's something that we obviously value, we think it's important, and it's something our whole region is trying to come up with some answers. And so if you're interested, I do want to read the number to Teresa and Dan Jacobson, which is seven seven five eight four eight five eight five nine. That's seven seven five eight four eight five eight five nine. So if you want to get involved, or take it to your pastor, or your boss, or whatever, I know there are businesses that also like to get involved and give back to the community. So thank you.
There you go.
That's good.
Go on. Okay, moving on to no more further business, we are adjourned.
Thank you. I'd like to call, yep, I'll turn my mic on first. I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of Monday, November twenty-seventh, with a roll call.
Chairperson Bybee?
Here.
Agency members Abbott?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Dare?
Here.
Agency attorney Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to number three, public comment. Do I have any public comment? Anyone wishing to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. Item number three, four point one, excuse me, item four point one, approval of the agenda. Do I have any changes to the agenda or a motion to approve? I'm sorry, Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dare? I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item five point one, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of October twenty-third, two thousand seventeen. Do I have any changes or corrections or a motion to approve? Mr. Lawson? Mr. Martini?
Or I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve, as submitted by Mayor Martini, with a second by Mr. Lawson. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Business items, number six point one, report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of October fifth, two thousand seventeen, through November eighteen eighth, two thousand seventeen. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Lawson?
Who to approve?
Do I have a second, Mr. Dare?
I'll second it.
I have a motion with a second. Any discussion? Please vote. Carries unanimously. Item number seven, seven point one, comments from the public. Anybody want to talk now? Okay, seeing?
Whoever holds your peace?
Seeing no public comment, comments from the agency and chief administrative chair, Mr. Driscoll, do you have anything? Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned.